Or maybe we will.
Adrian just got here.
Okay. Good morning and welcome to the November 3 meeting of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Pine.
Here.
Supervisor Horsley.
Here.
Supervisor Slocum.
Here.
Supervisor T. Series currently absent. President Groom.
President. Thank you. Now is the time for public comment, and I have a couple speakers. These are for items that are either on the consent calendar or not on the agenda. Martin Fox.
Good morning, President Groom, members of the board, my fellow veterans, Supervisor Slocum and Mr. Malpey, and County Council Mr. Byers. Thank you all for your service to the county. And thank you, members of the board, for voting to provide assisted outpatient treatment, known as Laura's Law, to persons who are living with serious mental illness who lack the insight needed to seek treatment voluntarily. I would also ask you to bring Assembly Bill 1194 to the attention of all county mental health service providers and employees who deal with the public. Less than a month ago, Governor Jerry Brown signed legislation, Assembly Bill 1194, clarifying that whether a person experiencing a mental health crisis is placed on a 72-hour hold for an assessment must depend upon the history of the person's mental health disorder without regard to whether the person presents an imminent or immediate danger to themselves or others. This is a monumental and historic change in the Lanterman-Petrus Short Act because it addresses the intellectually and morally bankrupt legal sophistry, which inserted the adjectives imminent or immediate before the word danger, and then those words were used to deny treatment to someone who failed to volunteer for it. Persons living with mental illness who lack the insight needed to seek treatment voluntarily now no longer need to become dangerous to themselves or others before being provided with services that will lead to their recovery. Our mental health crisis responders, including family members and law enforcement, will now have a way to stay safe and to reduce the severity and the incidence of untreated mental illness. For all of these reasons, please bring Assembly Bill 1194 to the attention of all county mental health service providers and employees who deal with the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Catherine M.K. Geary.
For the sake of argument, I'd like to say good morning to everyone. It's quicker that way. I'm representing Musicians United for Safe Energy Muse. I'm concerned about the last time I was here, the energy package that's being developed in light of the times. Also, I'd like to address our nearby county, our Valley of Silicone right around the corner that's too close for comfort in certain realms. I'm asking the women to step forward as much as possible here in this endeavor that I have. I'm worried about electrification of the track, let alone high-speed rail introducing itself. It could be in the valley, not on the peninsula. The fault line is far too dear, and it'll be dear as time goes on. I question cyberspace, cyberkinetics. In my personal journalism, I have made headway with, as far as gossip is concerned, Eric Snout, and I'm in touch with, so if you could bear with me, my credentials are kind of here and there. So what I'm asking the county to do is to table the energy package in light of electricity is improbable, and it is a gamey subject, especially when we have problems with UK DC influx, with AC influx. It's chancy, very chancy what's going on here. I'm asking you to table electrification until something more solid can be developed for the county, something that won't attract suicidal children. Thank you very much. Have a great day. Vote.
Thank you, Ms. Gary. Michael Stogner.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Michael Stogner. I'm from San Carlos, and I'm here today to speak on behalf of a San Mateo County employee. He's employed by the Juvenile Probation Department. His name is Joaquin Jimenez, Sr., and I became aware of his situation around the 25th of this last month by watching a video that was on Citizen Access TV, and it was a video of the Hafune Bay Council meeting. And his son, his 19-year-old son, who goes by the exact same name, reported an incident, and then the father reported an incident that they had with our San Mateo County Sheriff deputies and our San Mateo County Gang Task Force. And the father reported that he was assaulted and threatened. And I just want to make sure that his name is known and that his career is protected because these are allegations, of course. I contacted the Sheriff's Department around on the 25th and just requested the names of all of our deputies on duty on the North Patrol, South Patrol, and Gang Task Force for that day of October 18th, and I asked for the incident report of the alleged assault because there was physical contact. I was told there is no incident report, and we can't find whatever you're talking about. So I submitted a second email, and they asked me what date, and so we double-checked the dates, and then on my third email, I was notified that the spokesperson from the county Sheriff's Department actually has been informed that my information is accurate, and there is an internal investigation, and they cannot speak to me about it. So my main concern is this. We have a man who's, I've met him a couple times over the years, last two or three years. He's a great father, and he and his son honestly just reported something that happened. And then if you could just double-check with our Sheriff's Department as far as why the incident report was not there, that some type of altercation happened with the citizen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stogner. Robert Harley.
Good morning, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. My name is Robert Harker, and I am a self-styled open data evangelist. I've gotten involved in this county's open data portal, working as a volunteer with John Reidner. Today is a historic day because we're doing an all-mail-in ballot election, special election. And it also could be a historic day because we have the opportunity at 10:30 tonight to release the election results to the public on the open data portal. My request is specific. I'm asking for a preliminary statement of the vote to be sent to John Reidner, the open data portal liaison manager, I'm not sure, so that he can publish it on the website. Now, election data is probably the most public, the most valuable data that the county generates. It's how we run our government. My request is specific. I'm wanting a CSV, a comma-separated version list of the statement of vote. He will then be able to take that and upload it to our open data portal so that then can be consumed by the public. Mark Church in the election boards frequently asks questions, states that several goals of this election are that we're going to get increased efficiency and effectiveness. By publishing this on the open data portal, we'll make the information publicly available. They want increased voter participation. Voters will be able to make use of the data. They'll be able to make use of the tools that are available on the portal to display the data in various ways. Increased voter confidence. You'll be able to see data down not just on a per candidate basis, but on a per precinct, per candidate, per ballot measure basis. This is a management decision. There are no technical hurdles. The report is already being generated for at least the state board. It is also not a legal issue because this data has been released in the past. So I urge your support to encourage Mark Church to release the data to the county employee for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harker. We will forward your message to us, to Mr. Church. Mary Lorenas.
Good morning, Supervisors, members of the public. I'm Mary Lorenas, and I'm the legislative advocate for Surf Rider Foundation, San Mateo County Chapter, and the chapter would just like to thank the Board of Supervisors for your efforts with Tanitas Creek. We've done a lot of beach cleanup down there, and it's unbelievable how much trash has been picked up off that beach and hauled up those cliffs. So although we do promote, you know, public access in this case because it's humans behaving badly, very badly, we do appreciate your efforts in trying to protect that beach. On another note, I would like to say thank you to the San Mateo County Sheriffs that serve the coast side. In my community, in my neighborhood, we are extremely close, and we have an elderly woman who has Alzheimer's dementia, and there's about four of us neighbors who help take care of her along with her family, but also the sheriffs are constantly being called out to her home because part of the problem with Alzheimer's is this constant belief that somebody's trying to steal from you. And so her purse, her dog, everything has been stolen multiple times. But about a week ago, two weeks ago, there was an incident that was extremely trying for her where the sheriffs came out and helped her. And then the next day, the sheriffs showed up. They brought her flowers, and my neighbor just lit up like the Taj Mahal. I mean, this one little act of kindness on their part to bring her flowers meant so much, and she told all of us in the neighborhood about the handsome young man that brought her flowers. And she's almost 90, so I think, I just, that reminder of those little kindnesses that we can do for our elderly neighbors, and I just really, really appreciate those sheriffs because they have gone above and beyond the call of duty to be patient with this woman. So thank you, sheriffs.
Thank you for telling us that wonderful story. Mr. Turner.
Hello, President Groom, Commissioners. My name is Brent Turner, Supervisors. Just wanted to fill you in. We've been having conversation with the county and with Mr. Church, Mr. Irazari down at the headquarters for elections. Just wanted to update you that, interestingly, we have now had breaking news that the state of New Hampshire has moved toward open-source election systems as we've been advocating for San Mateo County, and these systems will be the kind of systems that the California Association of Voting Officials advocates, open-source general public license version 3, making for a much more secure, much less expensive system. And the good brave people of New Hampshire are the first to implement and deploy it. It'll be used in the primary coming up and also statewide in their presidential election. So again, we are hopeful that San Mateo County leads the state on this issue so that we can get California keeping up now with New Hampshire, who has taken the lead on this, and I'm available to all of you for any questions you might have regarding New Hampshire. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Turner. Supervisor Pine, you want to say something?
This is the son of New Hampshire, I say, Bravo, New Hampshire, Bravo to the Granite State. Bravo to democracy in New Hampshire. Thank you.
That's good. That was good. Do they have a state song you'd like to sing? Okay, that concludes public comment. Now we'll go to, now it is time to set the agenda and approve the consent calendar items with one change. Item number 20 needs to move to the regular agenda.
With that, I'll make the motion to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda items.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. So the agenda has been set, and the consent items have been approved. So let's go to number 20 and take that one. Mr. Byers?
Yeah, this, before you, is a resolution approving the hiring of retired former director of the Department of Housing, William Lowell, to an extra help position in order to provide policy and management support to the Closing the Jobs Housing Gap Task Force. The government code pursuant to pension reform requires that any employee who is to come back even on an extralegal basis or as a contractor within six months of retirement needs to be placed on the regular agenda for approval of the board.
All right. Do we need a motion to approve?
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number 20 is now passed. So we will go to item number one, which is Director Finley from the Park Department.
Thank you. Good morning, President Groom, members of the board, Mr. Malpey and Mr. Byers. Today, I'm here to recommend that you accept a generous gift from the San Mateo County Parks Foundation, cash donation of $152,300, and an in-kind donation of $18,500, for a total of $170,800 in contributions to the parks, to our Parks Department for the parks. And I wanted to mention a few of the, highlight a few of the projects that the foundation is helping to fund. First of all, they continue to help fund the Student Conservation Association. That's youth and young adults that are doing important work in county parks, and that money helps to match the funds that you have provided to the parks through Measure A. So that's $57,500 for SCA. Also, they're helping to fund a tool trailer for our stewardship corps for natural resource management. Really important that our volunteers have the right tools out on the site. They also are providing funding $15,000 for Bicycle Sunday, and those funds come from the Tour de Peninsula event, an event which they have raised a significant amount of money this year, the most money in recent years for the Tour de Peninsula. So very successful event this year. And lastly, I wanted to highlight the Pescadero Creek Fish Barrier Project removal. So that was the removal of the dam out at Pescadero Creek, and the foundation wants to provide a grant for $49,000 to help towards that. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Comments or questions?
No, it's wonderful. I'm happy to make a motion to accept money. So I'll make the motion to accept the donations and the appropriation transfer as well.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. And now I'd like to introduce the Chair of the San Mateo County Parks Foundation, Mary DeLong, who has some exciting news to share.
Good morning, Supervisors. It is very exciting this day to introduce our new Executive Director, Michelle Beasley. Unfortunately, we'll be losing Julia Bott, who has been an amazing woman for a long time. So she has been the heart of the foundation for 17 years, an incredible asset to this county and to the parks. At this point, I'd like to also recognize Dave Pine, who is on our board, Hertha Harrington, who is also on our board, Connie Sevier, thank you, who has been Chair for many years and is still very involved with Curiosity as the Chair for their Capitol Campaign and President. So at this point, I would like to give you Michelle. She is a dynamo and will be doing a great job for the Parks Foundation. So welcome.
Good morning, President Carol Groom, honorable members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Michelle Beasley, and I'm truly honored to be following Julia Bott's lead as the next Executive Director for the San Mateo County Parks Foundation. The foundation inspires people to care for, learn about, and explore their parks, and San Mateo County has some truly amazing and diverse park environments. And I myself was first inspired by San Mateo's parks as a Brownie and then a Girl Scout. So it is, it's a dream come true to come full circle and to share that passion and wonderment with others. I look forward to working with county parks and the Friends of groups and others to support the parks, programs, and volunteers. And prior to taking this position, I spent 11 years as Green Belt Alliance's San Mateo and Santa Clara County Regional Director. So I understand firsthand the vital role that parks play in creating sustainable, equitable, resilient, and healthy communities. So I look forward to working with everyone. Thank you.
Well, we're happy to have you. Do you want to make a comment, David?
It was my privilege to serve on the search committee, and we, you know, opened it to all comers and had a great slate of applicants, but Michelle Beasley, you know, stood out. It's the person we unanimously wanted to come and fill Julia Bott's big shoes. It's an exciting period for the parks, and we're so pleased to have Michelle joining us, and I think we're going to talk a little bit about Julia shortly, so I'll reserve comment from that for a moment. So welcome, Michelle, and there's a lot of good work ahead.
Thank you. Now, we will go to item number two, which is a presentation of a resolution honoring Julia Bott upon her retirement from the San Mateo County Parks Foundation. So I would make a motion that we reluctantly approve this resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Julia, you want to come forward, and we'll give you the proclamation, and then you can say a few words, and then we have a couple people who would like to speak. So I think the county, obviously, the county just wants to thank you for everything that you have done to support parks and the work that you have put in on the Tour de Peninsula, which has become such a prestigious event in this county, and the amount of time that we know that you spend, just not raising money, but being an advocate, being a real bully for public parks. And it's just been an incredible time that you have spent with this county, and I'm sure that my colleagues want to add to that, but thank you very, very much for everything that you have done.
Julia, thank you so much for everything. Our parks are such a big part of our community and a very important part of our community, and you've gone above me on to make sure they stay that way and that you raise money and that you, you know, really are the stalwart for the parks here in our community. So thank you for all your hard work, and I hope you get to take the time now to enjoy those parks instead of always having to raise money for them and fight for them. Good luck to you.
I'd like to add my thanks as well. I think the first time we worked together was on Measure O, and it was going to be a 16th cent, 16th of a percent, something like that percentage of sales tax for not only county parks but also city parks, and we almost won. We got about 60% of the vote, and unfortunately required a two-thirds requirement, but we worked really hard on it, and you were really inspirational. The other thing I want to thank you for is I learned so much from you, from hiking with you at Hudders Park, and I know what serpentine soil is now. And we worked together, and you were really the inspiration for the Edgewood Interpretive Center. I learned about butterflies and things of that sort. Any case, I really got to miss your leadership, and I know you're going to enjoy your retirement. So congratulations on really a spectacular and successful career. Oh, the one last thing I was going to think about at Edgewood Park, we also were able to convince PG&E not to essentially dig a big 10-foot wide, 20-foot wide trench, eight foot deep, and it was really because of the efforts of you and all of the advocates at Edgewood Park. We've been able to preserve that and teach them about serpentine soil as well. So thanks.
Thank you. Julia, the other day, last week, I think it was, we had a housing task force meeting, and one of the exercises was that every table had to get up and say just one word about the housing jobs gap, just one word. And if I had to apply that little exercise to your tenure as the Director of the Foundation, I would say tireless. You've been a tireless advocate for parks, and certainly we have some of the most beautiful parks in California, and the $182,000 this morning is just another testament to your hard work and your leadership. In my younger days, and I didn't know this at the time, but I used to enjoy riding my bike on Cuyahoga Road on Bicycle Sundays, and I never knew until a couple of weeks ago that we owe that special day to you. So I want to thank you on behalf of all those bicyclists, and I was by there this Sunday, and there are lots of people out there. There's hardly any parking, and it's grown and grown and grown. That's a testament to, I think, your leadership and your vision. So thank you. Understand you're going to Hawaii very shortly, and then Palm Springs, I can't remember where the other place was, but each of us need to be repotted from time to time, and we look forward. I can say that because I repotted.
And you're blossoming so well.
A little more water. And I hope when you come back, you come back refreshed and ready to go back to work for San Mateo County. So thank you so much.
Look at your little fluke.
It's gonna be a long morning.
It's that long drive.
Julia, I've really so much enjoyed serving on the Foundation Board for a year and a half or so now, and in doing so, and I really had a chance to, you know, really see up close and personal the amazing contributions you've made and just, you know, how hard you, you know, you've worked in your capacity as the Foundation leader. As my colleague said, you are certainly tireless. You've put all your passion and energy into making our parks better and have done so since the day you started the foundation. I mean, she is the founder of our foundation, and, you know, I think, you know, I hope you have a great sense of accomplishment when you look back over these years and think about, you know, how the parks have changed and have improved and how much your effort has really, really made a difference in a very, very meaningful way and tangible way that generations will enjoy for going into the future. I'd like to make a suggestion to, I guess, my colleagues and to the Parks Director is that, you know, perhaps we could find a trail or a campsite or something in the park that we might name in Julia's honor in recognition of her long tenure and contribution to our county.
Excellent idea. Before you get, before you say something, Julia, Lenny Roberts would like to add some comments.
Well, everything I was going to say has been said by all of you. I just wanted to add my congratulations because this job is, requires so much versatility to be an ambassador for the parks, raise money for the parks, explain to people who don't know much about the issues in the parks what they're all about, and Julia has just filled this role incredibly well. When she was under consideration, I do have to say, Mike Nevin had some concerns that she had been too much of an advocate prior to this, taking this job. And I sort of, I said, I don't think you need to worry about that. She understands the difference between what she was doing in her prior career, which included a Sierra Club Director position, and being an advocate and raising money for the parks. And so I think, you know, this has been such a And so I think, you know, this has been such a huge endeavor because the parks have gone through many, many cycles of good times and bad. And we've had this kind of calm, steady direction to help the public understand and to raise money for the parks. So I just want to add my thanks to all the work that Julia has put in for so many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Lenny.
Well, honorable members of the board, staff, everyone else, all our supporters, this is heartwarming. A little bit of history was being rewritten with your comments, and I appreciate it. But really Bicycle Sunday predates me. And so really, that was the vision of people who were county leaders prior to me. And it was just something that I saw that the community loved so much that we wanted to take it up. The work at Edgewood, it's great news about not having the PG&E line go through Edgewood. That's wonderful work. Again, work that really involves so many members of the community. And so they really deserve the credit because the foundation, our mission is to support the parks, inspire people to care for them. That's when we do it, we inspire them to go out and get active, though we don't take positions on things like that. So that was great. And Mike Nevin, that was interesting, yes. Almost being penalized for doing a job well done, but in the end...
No good deed goes unpunished.
Mike Nevin became a huge supporter of the Parks Foundation and the work that I was doing, becoming a big donor, always greeting us with a hug, offering to support, introducing me to people who I needed to meet. So, you know, that in itself is a testament to the support that is given to the parks and therefore to the Parks Foundation. I've always really, really valued that. It's been a great job. It's been a great job. I love it. I'm a little tired of doing it, but I love it. Working with the department, with the staff and the rangers, with the partners, with all of those who love the parks has been very, very inspiring. Those people who support the parks, they love the parks and they do it from their heart, and they give even more than I do, so much more. It's wonderful to have the support of the board for the department, and it's wonderful of the past support that we've seen. The amount of money and support you're giving with Measure A is very helpful to the department. I'll urge you to do a little bit more always, but it's very, very helpful. And where the department is right now has really helped the foundation become even better and is setting the stage for Michelle to have an absolutely excellent future and bring the foundation to the next step. Everybody needs to grow with that repotting of plants. And sometimes if you repot a plant properly, you cut off some of the roots. So that's it. I'm getting cut off at the bottom. It's perfect. The plant's going to flourish. So I do really want to go and offer my deep thanks to all of those who have served on the boards in the past, who serve on the boards now, all of the volunteers who have supported us, and really all of the donors, because the donors are really the ones who have made the success of the foundation. I'm just the one who gets to help convey the money, and everybody likes that. But really, it's the donors that have made the difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Julia. Supervisor Tissier, you have item number three.
Okay, gang, this can be a tough act to follow, so... But I'm pleased today to recognize a newly formed elder independent adult protection team called EDAP. In 2007, the Board of Supervisors commissioned a study on the demographics of this county through the year 2030. The study found that there will be 72% increase in the number of older adults above the age of 65 by the year 2030. And it is anticipated that this population will be increasingly active, independent, and engaged in managing their own affairs longer than in past generations. While the older adult population increases, so too have the number of predatory financial activities. We know this because the San Mateo County Adult Protective Services and the San Mateo County District Attorney's Office have experienced a rise in their caseloads. In response, the Elder Independent Adult Protection Team was recently established with Measure A funds as a partnership between the San Mateo County Health Department's Division of Aging and Adult Services and the District Attorney's Office. EDAP will coordinate services and other support for victims of elder independent adult abuse. The team will be made up of DA prosecutors, adult protective service investigators, an EDAP executive manager, an EDAP training and outreach specialist, and public guardian staff and county council deputies, all working together to identify and respond to complex cases of suspected elder abuse. With us today is District Attorney Steve Wagstaff, our Director of Aging and Adult Services, Lisa Mancini, Deputy County Council Amy Armsby, and the Executive Manager for EDAP, Shannon Morgan. And they will be making a short presentation to give you a little bit more about this team that's going to be helping us here in San Mateo County. But before they get up to make the presentation, I also have a resolution recognizing this newly formed group. So I'd like to ask those four individuals to please join me at the podium.
Did you just make a motion?
I just made a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There we go.
President Groom, members of the board, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers, good morning and thank you. And thank you to Supervisor Tissier. You've been a leader for us in this area, and we appreciate what you have done. I start off by saying thank you to all of you, to the members of the board, Mr. Malpe, for providing us with the resources, this team that you're going to hear about, to be able to accomplish the goal that we're going to do. We could not do this without you. In my office, we established a part-time position for elder abuse prosecutions probably a decade ago. And all we got was the very top of the crimes that came to us, the obvious ones. The goal here today is to no longer just deal with the tip, but to get down to where the cases are occurring. Because as Supervisor Tissier noted, our population is aging, and I'm living proof of it standing here. It's there. It's happening. And let me give you an example of the type of cases that we're dealing with. Speaking with brevity, it's a case that occurred, it's not an old case, it's from this year. Occurred in Milbrae. 91-year-old man, raised, was widower, his wife had died a few years ago. He had three children, two of them successes in life, living out of the area. Third one, 51-year-old son, ne'er-do-well, never really accomplished anything in life. And of course, though, there was our predator. He moved in with him in his home in Milbrae and very quickly started abusing him. There were multiple calls to law enforcement from neighbors for yelling, screaming, things like that, but there were never any visible signs. There was nothing ever there that was seen that could be the key. Ultimately, his children, particularly his daughter and her husband up in Washington, state of Washington, started getting very concerned because the son was cutting off communication, wasn't letting them get there, wasn't making the contact. She actually sent a cellphone through the mail to him, private to him. He never got it. It was intercepted by the son. The son was turning from just yelling in abusive language to actually hitting and beating his 91-year-old father to get that. He was additionally going and taking his money. He got himself power of attorney. He basically cut his 91-year-old father off from the world as he abused him, took his money. And finally, the daughter and her husband decided they're just going to get down here on a plane and came down to the door. The door was answered by the son, who went on a tirade that they had recorded. They actually brought a recorder with them, and the tirade about you get out of here, he wants nothing to do with you, just get away type of a thing. Law enforcement was called. They saw bruises on him. You could actually see a slight bruise on this occasion. Many times what he was doing was kicking him in the legs, where it wouldn't be seen when there's just a law enforcement response to his 91-year-old father. He was stealing money from him. He was arrested and taken to our county jail, and he used his father's credit card to bail out. It was followed up by our team, the prosecutor. We filed charges on it, did some digging, worked very well with the family attorney to try and get restraining order to get him out of there. They found in his room, law enforcement found $24,000 in his room, cash. Our belief is that was taken from the father. We went through the system with great help. We did what the law gives us some tools to do now that didn't necessarily exist in years gone by. He was 91, competent, mental illness, there was no dementia, there was no Alzheimer's, but he still loved his son. And we know this pattern. They got him away, the attorney got him, we got a restraining order, we prosecuted him, we convicted him. He entered a plea to felony charge of elder abuse. He was sentenced to one year in the county jail, five years of probation in which he can have no contact with the victim, his father. And additionally, he cannot be engaged in any type of work in which he deals with elders of any sort. So it was a good outcome. He'll be supervised by our probation department over the next few years, and he is doing one year in the county jail. So he got the punishment there, maybe not quite what we wanted. We felt this was one that warranted, we were offended by this. We thought state prison was the best answer for him. But the judge made a reasonable decision to protect the father. The father still loves his son, says he's not, I don't want him out of the will. That's the love that's there, and we understand that. You made a wonderful point earlier about when you're dealing with Alzheimer's, when police show up, sometimes they don't know, because it may be the exact circumstance you know. What it takes is experts, and that's what's been developed when you've allowed us to have this elder independent adult protection team. This is a team of experts, working with the experts that we'll be working with, my office, I have an investigator in my office, as well as two prosecutors who already, we've already separated them, they've got full caseload right now, dealing with victims, only victims who are over 60 or are dependent adults. It's there. It's a positive answer. We will make a difference. We will be able to show that difference in terms both by example and by the statistics of what we're doing. So my point here and my introduction to you is to say thank you. We appreciate it. You will make a difference in elder protection in San Mateo County, and we will be able to come back to you and show you what that difference is. I'd like to do now is turn this over to our partners in this, as to Lisa Mancini and to Amy Armsby, who will take you on the next step of this story.
Thank you, Steve. Good morning, everyone. So I'm going to take you on just a couple of slides that are the educational part of our presentation, so bear with me. Actually Supervisor Tissier has already touched on a lot of these issues, but we just wanted to make a note that we're really looking at a large population, a large percentage of the population when we're talking about older Americans. The National Center on Elder Abuse has estimated that currently 40.1 million Americans are over the age of 65, and that's about 13% of the population. Just for comparison's sake, in 1900, that population was 4%. So we really, we have an issue that's trending in the direction of increasing percentage of the population. Just this year, millennials overtook baby boomers in terms of total numbers. And millennials are the 18 to 34-year-olds. So we can expect this trend to continue. We will continue to see an aging population. I wanted to make a note of something that's, I think, reason for all of us to feel good. Among older adults in the United States, a substantially higher percentage of those who report that they don't feel or think of themselves as old live in the western part of the country. And along with that, this group also reports being in good or excellent health and getting more exercise than, at a significantly higher rate than other regions of the country. So reason to feel good. Unfortunately, they also report that they feel less respected because of their older age than in other regions of the country. But I think we have to take the good with the bad. This board, and Supervisor Tissier alluded to this, this board recognized the need for specific data that within San Mateo County and commissioned the development of a demographic projection model back in 2007. And it was a projection model for the years 2020 through 2030. The board adopted the model, as I said, in 2007, and since then, the data that's been obtained through this model has been used to inform county policies impacting older residents, including efforts to assist older residents to age in place. And Aging in Place recognizes the increasing ability of older Americans to live independently and to remain active. With that, I think, comes a need for additional protection. I wanted to just make a note about the concept of dependent adults. At this point, approximately 140,000 residents of San Mateo County live with a disability. There's reason to think that's probably an underestimate. As we define victims of elder and dependent adult abuse in what's known as the Elder Abuse and Dependent Adult Civil Protection Act, what we're talking about are someone between the ages of 18 and 64 that has certain mental or physical disabilities that keep him or her from being able to do normal activities or protect himself or herself. So dependent adults often have a relative or a friend or some type of caregiver who handle or assist them with their affairs. This is also, of course, true of elder adults. Some folks reside at home, some reside in board and care facilities, some reside in institutional settings like nursing homes. So preventing discovering, investigating, and prosecuting elder and dependent adult abuse can occur across many different settings and in widely varying contexts. So this is the backdrop against which the Elder Independent Adult Protection Team has been developed. Good morning. We wanted to provide you some data and statistics that show this increase that we are seeing in our county regarding elder independent adult abuse. As you can see from this data, of our 1,400 cases that are reported on an annual basis, 26% include some form of financial fraud. This has been an increase that we've seen over the years. Just in this first quarter of this year, we are noticing a 10% to 20% increase in these types of cases. We might wonder, why is this occurring? Well, as has been stated, there is an increase in our senior population and the ability to age in place, which is wonderful. And because of that, we need to make sure that we have enough services to help folks move into their later years. Also, in San Mateo County, there's an increased wealth, and that is well-known to many perpetrators. And that's an area we really need to be looking out toward. Another startling indicator is for every one report, every one report that is reported to Adult Protective Services, research has shown that there are 24 unreported cases, much higher than any other type of crime of abuse that we have in this country. So again, thank you. As a result of the Measure A funding, the county has developed a collaborative group, teamed together with the district attorney, with county council, and with Aging and Adult Services to proactively address the various types of abuse that affect our older independent adults. How we're a little bit unique in our county is you may have heard the term FAST in other counties, and it's solely focused on financial abuse. What we are really looking forward to doing is looking at the holistic approach. So all types of abuses that might impact older adults and adults with disabilities. I think, did I click one too far? I did. I apologize for that. So what is EDAP, Elder Dependent Adult Protection Team? It's not a name that rolls off your tongue right now, but we're very hopeful in months to come that the EDAP team will be a very well-known acronym within our county. So we're very thrilled, as was mentioned, the staff that has been added. We added five staff into Aging and Adult Services, and I'll be introducing our manager in a moment. Our district attorney has two full-time, as Steve mentioned, prosecutors and an investigator solely dedicated to elder independent adult abuse. And county council has been extremely, extremely supportive of this effort and will continue to be. So our whole goal is really looking at protection and prevention. That's really what our aim is of forming this EDAP group and then doing what we need to do to bring things forward for prosecution. I'm very pleased to look out in the crowd and see our community partners, Commission on Aging has been very supportive of this, Commission on Disabilities, and our other partners out in the community who help us help people age in place in our community. At this point, I would like to introduce Shannon Morgan. Shannon, if you'd come up. She has an incredible passion for this work, and we just know that between her and Nicole Fernandez, who is our outreach and educator and trainer, which is another huge piece that we're working on in our collaboration with law enforcement, with banks, with clergy, that we get the awareness out to our community.
we get the awareness out to our community. So it's a privilege for me to introduce Shannon Morgan.
Thank you, Lisa. Good morning. As the manager of the Elder and Dependent Adult Protection Team, I would like to thank the board for their support. Through the collaboration between Aging and Adult Services, the District Attorney's Office, law enforcement agencies, and the county council office, this team will be successful in identifying, addressing, and preventing the mistreatment and financial exploitation of older and dependent adults, as well as creating a circle of care which will allow them to continue to thrive and live safely in San Mateo County. My hope today is that we have inspired all of you to join us in the fight to raise awareness on this silent but ever-growing trend, and as a community, to be motivated to make a call when we suspect abuse and fraud. Because I believe that together, we can make a significant and positive impact in the lives of those who are most at risk. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I also want to mention, you know, we're talking about trying to do more prevention and early intervention in this area, and they're starting off with a bang because they're going to be presenting at the Seniors on the Move Conference on Tuesday, which there'll be close to 700 seniors there. So it'll be a good opportunity for us to let seniors know, not just about the prosecution side, which is going to be important at the end of the day, but what to look for and to be aware of it so that it doesn't happen to them. So this is one of our first big outreach sessions with EDAPT. So thank you all. It's a great team. You're already doing great work, and we look forward to more information as we move down the road. Thank you.
If I can just make a very brief comment. You know, this whole team, I think, is—it's an A-team. And I know they're going to go on to do great, great things under your leadership, Supervisor Tissier, but, you know, I'm always looking for leadership opportunities in—for deputies in my office, and I think Amy Armesby has really embraced this opportunity. She's very passionate about elder law issues in particular, and I think it shows in the quality of and commitment to this critical legal work. So I just wanted to take a moment and thank Amy and really the whole team for this effort.
Supervisor Tissier, thank you. And District Attorney Wagstaff, thank you for being here this morning. Lisa, Amy, Michelle, all of you. You got—
Commission on Aging.
Commission on Aging, Commission on Disabilities.
Big groups.
So good luck to you, and we know you're gonna—we know you're gonna beat this down. You really are. Dave? Sorry.
Just a brief comment. I think this is a terrific initiative, and it's great to see the collaboration across our departments focused on it. And, you know, hopefully, you know, we can really well document what we're doing and package it up for other counties to look at, because this issue is going to be increasing in visibility all over the state and country with the aging population. It's such a severe situation now, and I suspect with this level of focus, we're probably going to be doing a better job than pretty much anyone. So hopefully, we can get past this wisdom on to others.
I assume you'll also be looking at these telemarketing schemes. I mean, the most recent one that I saw was somebody who had claimed to be from the IRS. One of the things that happens with older adults is that they tend to may be real successful in prior life, they seem to lose confidence in themselves. And so I've seen this IRS scam where they've said, you have to pay a certain amount of money within this really quickly and deposit it, and unfortunately, so many seniors seem to fall for that. So really looking forward to seeing some prosecution of those people. So I really applaud the whole team and applaud the efforts of Supervisor Tissier on working on this issue.
Okay, let's go to—we're going to item number four, and I was going to ask you today to honor one of San Mateo's most unsung but very accomplished heroes, who has been serving the needy and the aging and the disabled population for a very long time. Nancy Keegan joined Catholic Charities and became a volunteer to—the program assistant to work as a director of the Meals on Wheels programs. And in 2001, she was promoted to program director of Adult Day Services for the County of San Mateo Catholic Charities. She's also been very active, served on our—the county's New Beginnings Coalition, served on the Efficiency Review Committee, the Paratransit Coordinating Council, and the San Mateo County Emergency FEMA Board. And now she has chosen to step aside for a few years and raise a brand-new little baby. And I personally have served with Nancy for such a long time on the Paratransit Coordinating Council especially, and know the quality of the work that she has done and the great compassion she has for all of the people in San Mateo County. So I would like to make a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll second that.
And ask for your support.
Aye.
And then ask Nancy to come and receive this.
I'll be very brief, but I just wanted to say thank you very much for this. It was a lovely surprise, and it's an extraordinary honor. So I know that you have so much business to do, so for you to take the time to do this for me means—the world to me. And it's fitting that I came after this presentation, so I've got to see a lot of my colleagues and friends and people that I've worked with for so many years and so— and that do incredible work, so. And I wouldn't be standing here if it wasn't for my staff and my team and our volunteers that I worked with at our day program and at Catholic Charities. So working with and advocating for older adults, adults with disabilities and caregivers has been incredibly rewarding work for me and inspiring. It's been my privilege and honor to do so. And although it wasn't an easy decision for me to move on or step aside for a few years, as Carol said, I know it's the right one because I'm taking on the most important role. My son is actually here. He fell asleep, so I'm napping. And it's nap time. Don't be insulted. It's nap time, so. But I just especially want to thank Supervisor Carol Groom. Thank you. It has been an honor to work with you, especially at the PCC, for all those years and all the work that you've done. And so—I think also just seeing this presentation today, I wanted to say, the last time I was here speaking was actually helping to advocate for funding for Measure A for older adult services. So I thought it was fitting, too, that I was here to see your presentation. So congratulations. I'm happy to support it and follow along. So thank you so much.
All right, we're going to item number five. Supervisor Slocum, Vice President Slocum, you want to introduce the San Mateo County Veterans Commission?
I do. Thank you, Madam President. The first item here, item five, is pretty straightforward. It just seeks your approval to expand, to increase the number of veteran commission members from nine to 11. And there is precedent for that, of course. The LBGTQ, excuse me, Commission felt it necessary to do the same thing. And really, there were just so many qualified candidates that the committee felt like expanding the number to 11 would be in the best interests of the veteran community and, of course, San Mateo County. So I would ask that you adopt a resolution authorizing the expansion of the San Mateo County Veterans Commission from nine members to 11 members.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And if I might continue, the next item is to actually recommend to you all the members of the Veterans Commission. And I have to tell you that the process, while it was lengthy—if you look back on the day when we had the Veterans Summit nearly a year ago, and to today when we're actually voting on the commission members—that that journey might have seemed long, but I actually think it was—we did this quite rapidly, in fact. And there were just so many great candidates. We interviewed—we had nearly 100 applicants for the Veterans Commission, and we interviewed for two and a half, three days. We interviewed nearly 30, I think, applicants. And as Supervisor Horsley said, and as Donna Valencourt said, what great Americans did we interview during those days? It was such an honor to talk with those veterans and learn about their experiences and to hear in-depth stories of Iraq and Afghanistan and PTSD and some of the challenges that veterans face. It was—I think for all of us, it was an honor to talk to those veterans. And I just want to give a big thank you to Supervisor Horsley, who gave up two and a half, three days of his time to be with us, to do these interviews, and I sincerely appreciate the time. And if I can ever repay the favor, do call on me.
Oh, I will.
And also to a veteran herself, our Director of Human Resources, Donna Valencourt, who sat with us for two and a half, three days. And I have to tell you, as you know, Donna is so organized and so precise that she made every effort to keep the two supervisors on track.
That was a hard job.
And that was a hard job. And she really guided us in the process. And Donna, thank you so much for your participation. And I'm sure you share the sentiment that the people that we interviewed were just—they were just amazing, and sometimes their stories—I don't know about you all, just, you know, were so personally touching, being a veteran myself. So thank you to everybody that made an application. It was a very difficult process, I think, to come to. First, we came to nine, and then we said to ourselves, wait, we've got to expand this to 11. And we just did that, and thank you for that. But let me introduce to you the members of the commission who are here in just a moment. But before we go any further, perhaps I could make a motion to recommend all the appointments to the San Mateo County Veterans Commission. There's actually two groups, one whose term expires in 2018 and one group whose term expires in 2017.
It'd be my honor to second it.
Okay. We have two seconds, but we'll take Supervisor Horsley's as for the record.
Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Aye. So it gives me—it's a very high honor to introduce to you all and to the audience and all the millions of people that are watching on television right now. Well, maybe not millions, but—
Thousands.
Thousands, certainly. The members of the Veterans Commission, and they may not all be here, but if I call your name—and I know I have some of you I've talked to earlier and I know are here—but just stand up and be recognized if you could. And first is Lisa King from San Mateo, Edmund Bridges from Redwood City, Mark Leach from San Mateo, Paul Schreff from Menlo Park, Myra Weir, Redwood City, Kai Martin from Pacifica, and Sherry Corcoran from Menlo Park, Ron Dixon from Foster City, Fred Baer from Foster City, Alfred Banfield from South City, and last but certainly not least, is Francisco Aliva from Redwood City. And there you have the members of our first Veterans Commission. Now, if I could just have 45 more seconds. I know none of—we haven't met. We're going to meet. Our first meeting is on November 16th at 6:30 in this chambers. And I know we haven't appointed a chair yet, but perhaps I could call on Francisco from Redwood City, who's sort of a neighbor of mine. Francisco, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but would you please come up and just say a few words on behalf of your fellow commissioners? Now, he didn't know I was going to do this, everybody, so.
First of all, thank you so much for the opportunity to be part of this group. I think it's a illustrious group, as you've called out. I know we're all familiar with the challenges our veterans have today. I'm very passionate. I'm sure the rest of my counterparts are passionate about doing the best we possibly can to make their lives a little more pleasant and try to help them in any way we possibly can to ensure they have everything they need to continue to go through life and be productive citizens. So I'm going to be brief. I know you're very busy, but once again, just like to thank you for the opportunity. It's a great opportunity for us to step up and do something for our counterparts. Thank you so much.
Now, the reason I selected Francisco—and let's give him a round of applause in just a second. But he actually is a movie star. And he's—he is. He's in—he's in big-name movies, right, Francisco?
Well, I don't know. Big guy.
But in any case, he is a movie star, and it's an honor to have you all with us. I need to just thank Raina Faralis one last time for really shepherding this whole thing from beginning to end. Rain, I don't see you in the audience, but wherever you are, thank you so much. Ileana Rodriguez and John Niblin, who actually read the 100 applications. Thank you for your work at screening all those. It's sincerely appreciated. I think we ended up with a wonderful group. And I have thanked and recognized Supervisor Horsley and Director Valencourt for their work. Thank you once again. And a special thank you to the person—persons that really did a lot of work and will continue to do a lot of work on this, Selena Toy Lee and Tammy Switzer. Selena, thank you. And last, let me just quickly introduce Norman Aylman, who is San Mateo County's new Veteran Services Supervisor. See here? There he is in the back. Thank you. So I hope you all mark your calendar. We'll be seeing one another on the evening of November 16th, and thank you very much for your service and welcome home.
Thanks, Supervisor Slocum.
Can I just add one thing? It was really my honor to spend that time with Warren and interview all those people. One of the things that we all—and I think he's already said it—is that we were really impressed with just the spirit of all those vets who, you know, when the call was, can you be of service? Is it like almost 100 people? And it was—I think it was actually about 35 that we interviewed. The other thing is that we did—you know, we did get sidetracked a lot because we would ask, you know, you'd ask where you served and ask them some—give us some anecdotes. And we ended up—not a single one of them, even though so many of them were combat vets, not a single one of them said, I was a hero. Not a single one of them said, I was decorated for this or that. They just talked about their service. And I thought, you know, they are probably 1% of our population. They're the best in America, and I was really proud to be part of just interviewing all of those folks, and want to thank you for including me. One of the last things—that there were a couple of people that we—they were actually maybe alternates. One young man who maybe wasn't the most articulate actually described himself as not being articulate, but he talked about the number of suicides amongst our veterans coming back from combat situations in Iraq and Afghanistan. And I remember I asked him, can you describe why they feel hopeless? And he—he left us—I think all of us had our heart in our throat. I think he brought tears to our eyes in how he was—he may not have been articulate in other things, but he described that so that we understood very well why there was this feeling of hopelessness. And so I really congratulate you on starting this Veterans Commission, and I believe that we will—I hope we're able to provide some services to those young men and women who have served so honorably for our country. Thank you. Thank you all.
We'll go to item number seven, which is zoning change. Mr. Monowitz, thank you.
Good morning, President Groom, members of the board, Mr. Malpe and Mr. Byers. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Will Gibson, the planner who's worked on this project. In addition to being the department's lead on housing matters, Will has been our lead on North Fair Oaks Community Plan and its implementation, and I'm pleased to hand the mic over to him for this presentation.
Thank you, Steve. Good morning, Supervisors. This item is a zoning text and map amendment adopting a new neighborhood mixed use, or NMU zoning district, and replacing the existing C1 NFO zoning district on Middlefield Road. NMU zoning district, and replacing the existing C1 NFO zoning district on Middlefield Road in North Fair Oaks between First Avenue and Eighth Avenue. And I'm just going to, it also includes some minor amendments to the design review regulations for that area, as well as consideration of an initial study and negative declaration for this project. And I'd like to just briefly touch on the context and the background that motivated this zoning amendment, then go through the details of the zoning itself, touch on the environmental review, and then take any questions that the board may have. So, this is the project location, as you see here, Middlefield Road in North Fair Oaks from First to Eighth, and there is a little bit of a more detailed view. As you can see, it extends essentially one parcel deep along Middlefield with a slightly larger area to the south end at Eighth Avenue that kind of bells out a little bit to the And this is one of several proposed rezonings for North Fair Oaks. You can see those rezonings in the red outlines and the green outlines here, and the anticipated schedule of those rezonings is also shown. The neighborhood mixed-use proposed zoning district is the first of those. That will be followed by the area along El Camino Real, followed by Redwood Junction, which is Phase 2B shown there, and then Phase 3 is the industrial areas around Spring Street and Edison Way. And each of those proposed rezonings is intended to implement the North Fair Oaks Community Plan. The North Fair Oaks Community Plan was adopted by this board back in 2011, and in essence, it establishes the land use and the development goals for North Fair Oaks for the next approximately 25 to 30 years going forward. And as you can see, so, North Fair Oaks Plan is fairly comprehensive, it sets out a fairly broad vision for that development, but at the core of that plan is a set of new land use designations that apply to specific areas in North Fair Oaks, and that's what's shown on this graphic here. And those land use designations essentially guide what can be done to develop properties in those specific areas in the future. And if you can see, it's a little bit difficult to see on this graphic, but the pink area along Middlefield Road is a new neighborhood mixed-use land use designation, and that's exactly co-terminous with the proposed NMU zoning that we are, that is before you today. So, the new NMU zoning is directly intended to implement the neighborhood mixed-use land use designation from the community plan. The community plan actually sets out some fairly specific, in that land use designation, it sets out some very specific guidelines. This is Table 2.1 from the community plan, and it shows the standards for that land use designation. As you can see, building heights, building bulk setbacks, and parking requirements are included. Those specific standards that the board adopted are the basis for this new zoning that we, that is before you today. So, just to touch on, quickly, actually, I jumped a slide ahead, I apologize. So, after adoption of the North Fair Oaks Community Plan, the Planning and Building Department began to work with a work group of community members to ensure that not only in the adoption of the community plan, but also in the adoption of the zoning, the community had a voice in the implementation process. We've been working with that work group over the last several years on various aspects of the zoning, and that work group has overseen this zoning and has signed off on the proposal that you see before you today. So, turning to that zoning, again, this is from First to Eighth Avenue on Middlefield Road, and what the community plan envisions for that area is a medium-scale mix of neighborhood-serving, commercial, and residential uses. And I would emphasize that that is not all that different from what you actually see on Middlefield today, and it's not all that different from what is allowed in the existing zoning. Some of the other phases that you saw earlier of the rezoning that will be coming forward require much more dramatic changes. We are required to update the zoning to be consistent with that adopted community plan, but the changes that are required to do so, in this case, are relatively minor. That said, those minor changes do exist, and here I'm making that point again, very similar to the existing zoning, the scale, the density, the height of development is essentially the same as what is already allowed. However, there are some changes, and the key of those changes, I'll just go through in brief here. The height of buildings allowed in that area is increased by four feet, from 36 to 40. Mixed-use, commercial and residential developments with commercial on the ground floor is now allowed by right rather than by use permit. There are some parking changes, and there are allowances now for off-site and shared parking to meet the parking requirements of new uses. Some new land uses are included that were not previously contemplated in the zoning. Those include farmers' markets, small indoor exercise and leisure facilities, and there are some changes to our definitions of childcare facilities and educational facilities to broaden Some land uses have changed permit requirements, and those include personal convenience services such as beauty salons, pet sales and grooming, liquor stores and bars, community centers, and buildings that are exclusively residential or that have ground-floor residential. All of those now require a use permit, whereas previously they did not. And finally, some uses are disallowed. Those include industrial cleaning establishments such as chemical dry cleaners, food establishments that specialize exclusively in takeout, funeral homes, and motor vehicle fuel sales and service stations. All of those are no longer allowed. However, if they exist in the current zoning district, they will be allowed to remain, but if they close for a significant period of time, they cannot reopen, and obviously new uses of those types can't locate in this district. A few of the other changes involved in this zoning. The minimum parcel size for the area remains the same, the minimum lot, the maximum lot coverage remains the same, which is 80%. The maximum floor area of buildings has been changed slightly for a single-use building, such as all commercial or all residential, it's lowered slightly, but for a mixed-use building, it's raised, and this is simply to incentivize the mixed-use development that this district contemplates. A few of the other changes, this shows the setbacks for buildings, where buildings must be set back from the property line, not distinctly different from the setbacks that are already allowed, but this simply implements those setbacks that are already established in the community plan. Again, as I noted, there are some changes to the design review regulations for this area, and the design review for Middlefield applies only to commercial structures, commercial uses, that'll continue to be the case. The main changes we made, we removed some pictorial examples from the design standards. They were very old, they're very outmoded and not useful to guide design any longer, so we simply took those out. We cleaned up the language to make the section a little more readable, and we added a few changes to make it consistent with the community plan. Staff completed an initial study of this project evaluating the environmental impacts, and we found no potentially significant negative environmental impacts from the project. The negative declaration was circulated until October 19th, and no comments were received. Let me just emphasize, in addition to our work with the work group to craft these zoning amendments, and in addition to the outreach that was done for the original adoption of the community plan itself, we've also reached out to the community on several recent occasions to receive feedback and comment on these zoning amendments. On July 23rd, at the North Fair Oaks Council, we held a workshop. On August 5th, we held a separate workshop in the community, and then these zoning changes came back to the North Fair Oaks Council on August 27th, where they voted to unanimously recommend approval. The Planning Commission also reviewed on September 23rd, and they voted also to unanimously recommend approval with some minor changes to the standards that guide horizontal or side-by-side mixed-use developments, and those changes are in the proposal that you see before you. With that, staff's recommendation is this, for this project is that the Board of Supervisors adopt the proposed NMU zoning district, replace the existing C1 NFO district with that newly adopted NMO district, adopt the proposed minor amendments to the design review regulations, and certify the associated negative declaration for this project. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Just a quick question on design review. I see you have the standards and guidelines. Who does the design review for this area? Would it be a separate group?
There's a design review committee for this area, and they use those standards as the guide for their work, and we've actually modified the design review regulations slightly that, such that it encourages them to use the design review regulations that exist in our zoning and Chapter 7 of the community plan, which also has a set of, not mandates, but guidelines of the Chapter 7 of the community plan. Those together now will form the basis for that committee to look at the design of structures.
Is this an existing design review committee that already exists?
It is. The district exists, and the committee exists.
And I guess one other question, because I don't know if this happened in this area, but in other areas, that, you know, people go to design review, and it goes on and on and on. Is there some paring down of the timeframe at which they give them the feedback, and they're done, or does this have that potential to go on for months and months and years and years?
That's good. I'm not too familiar with how the design review takes place in Middlefield, because we don't get very many, to date, we haven't gotten very many new buildings. Design review only applies to new structures. Middlefield hasn't seen that many new buildings, and this only applies to one, basically, the fronting on Middlefield. If it's commercial, it's subject to design review. So, I can't speak to that, but I do know overall that's been a process problem, and...
Steve would like to address that?
Just real briefly, we are working with all of our design review committees to address that concern, working specifically to ensure that, should the committees need more information, that that be addressed at the first meeting, the second and subsequent meetings if necessary. We're not asking folks to bring in new information that had not been previously requested. We're also strongly encouraging them to take action within two meetings, and we are doing our best to facilitate their decision-making abilities such that they can come to quick conclusions on these matters.
Great. It's good to hear.
Anyone else? Supervisor By.
I had, I guess, two questions. On the height, and I'm sure a lot of thought was given to this, but just to give me a little more background on that, I mean, there's such a demand for the housing now, and, you know, we're kind of capping this off at, what, three stories?
Essentially, three stories. It's already three stories, but it's 36 feet, so we increased it to 40 feet. And the main, that was not necessarily to increase the allow, the possible density of housing, but to give, if you're having a mixed-use development, a lot of the times in mixed-use development, developers would like more flexibility in the possible floor heights, and that four feet extra gives them the flexibility to have a taller ground-floor commercial space and normal residential floor heights above that.
So, if a housing developer wanted to do something higher, they would have to seek, what would the process be?
They would have to seek an exception from these guidelines. They could apply for a density bonus through our density bonus ordinance. It would be outside of the normal by right, so if they come in and they're within this height, they, and they're within the uses that are allowed, it would be a by-right permit, they wouldn't have to go through any discretionary approval processes. They could still go outside of that, but it would go through the Planning Commission and potentially the board. It's possible, it's not, it's not precluded by this, but it wouldn't be just an automatic approval.
Right. They obviously have a strong desire to keep the height, looking, the height on this street at this kind of level.
It's pretty, yeah, it's more a desire to keep the character of the street and the physical form of the street as it is, consistent with what's existing. The other areas, especially the phases that you saw, Phase 2A and 2B along El Camino and in the Redwood Junction area of North Fair Oaks, those heights are increased significantly by the new zoning. So, this area wasn't seen as one that we wanted to greatly increase the density, but there are other areas that we'll be addressing that, and mainly because housing is needed, as you say.
Okay. And could you tell me a little more about this childcare definition? I've done a little work with your office on this, on this issue, and I recall that the definition needed kind of an upgrade in general.
I think, you know, we merely, I think we adopted an expanded definition that was more consistent with the state's definition of childcare facilities, and that was simply our, our definition had been outmoded and somewhat limited, and this includes a broader range of what qualifies as childcare.
Thank you.
Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, thank you to Steve Monowitz, and Will, thank you for all your work. I know you and your team put in a lot of time and energy and hard work on this matter, and it's appreciated. One of our goals was, I think during this process and other processes in North Fair Oaks, was to give the community a voice, and I feel like with the outreach and the community meetings that were held and the involvement of the North Fair Oaks Community Council, that we achieved that. Doesn't mean that we can't get better in the future, but I appreciate all the work that went into that. I'm wondering, just really briefly, if you could just talk about one of those community meetings and sort of what, just give the board, give my colleagues a flavor of that dialogue that took place.
Certainly. So, we had a couple of different formats. One of them was a hybrid meeting, which was sponsored by the community council itself. Another one, just speaking to the recent meetings, another one was a standalone public workshop that we held. And essentially, we introduced the work of the work group, and then we tried to make sure that in both those situations, work group members were present, as well as council members as representatives of the community, so that if issues came up, that spoke to the work of both those bodies, they could be answered by those representatives as well. We tried to present the proposed changes and explain the process that they had, that had created them through the work of the work group and through the work of the council, and how they were generated from the community plan itself. And to go to, into as much detail those changes, and to just try to receive from the community, how did they see those as problematic? What did they see as the vision for this street? How did it work for them? How would they like to see it work for them? Which uses are functional, which uses are not, in as much detail as possible. Quite frankly, and I think this is a, kind of speaks to the fact that these are relatively minor changes, there was not a lot of objection to the proposed changes. What we heard more frequently was, were issues about Middlefield itself and the potential changes, which, as you know, are coming forward to Middlefield, the potential change to three lanes and the parking configuration changes. We heard a lot about that, and a lot about broader parking issues in North Fair Oaks, and much less about the specific changes. Once people understood the nature of the changes and the relatively minor impact of those changes, I think the community was pretty broadly supportive of them. But there are other issues in North Fair Oaks that surfaced that are related, and we did hear a lot about those.
Thank you. Just a couple more quick things, if I could, Madam President. Curious specifically about vape stores, stores that sell electronic cigarettes, I guess is what you call them, not sure. Is that prohibited or permitted?
They are not included. Liquor stores require a use permit, vape stores are not addressed in the zoning at all, and we would actually consider that to be prohibited, since they're not an allowed use that's described in the zoning.
Thank you. I read through the sign changes or suggestions here, and I didn't quite follow all of it, but I was wondering if maybe you and I and Steve could get together, whoever the specialist is on that, and talk about, just offline, the sign topic. And then, finally, one of the things that I have heard recently and frequently, I met with 33 mothers the other night, and it was a heart-wrenching conversation, but bottom line was, they're very concerned about the gentrification of the neighborhood and displacement, and I know that's happening in other places, and it's a sensitive topic, but I'm just wondering if, I know Mr. Calagie's working on this, but I'm wondering if offline, we couldn't put our heads together in some sort of a working group, just to kick this around? And I understand there may be a consultant who we already have retained, who has real experience in this area and might be able to help us, so maybe we could have that conversation offline with Mr. Calagie and yourself and others. And I just want to, lastly, say, of course, that parking, you mentioned parking. Parking is a big concern, obviously, in North Fair Oaks, and I wanted to thank and recognize Mr. Calagie for his work and the North Fair Oaks Forward team on that, and all the work that you've done with the parking study that occurred some time ago. But just a big shout-out and thank you for all your work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Supervisor.
If I may jump in, I just want to make sure that the board gets accurate information regarding the electronic cigarette sales. As currently written, indoor retail sales is a permitted use on Middlefield, so I think it might be a stretch to conclude that vape stores were prohibited. So, I would suggest that if that is in interest of the board in pursuing, that we would come back at a later date with regulations for such facilities. I'm not comfortable at this point saying that they're prohibited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question? We were just talking... We were just talking about our tobacco ordinance.
Did we not make e-cigarettes? Didn't we include e-cigarettes in our new definition of the tobacco ordinance?
For prohibiting tobacco or smoking in an incorporated multi-family?
And we included e-cigarettes in the tobacco ordinance.
All of the ordinance, right.
But that's not for sale.
Yes.
And the scope of that is, Mr. Byers was, John Niblin with the county council's office, and the scope of that was specific to multifamily housing and also use, of course, on county facilities, but with respect to retail sales for purposes of zoning, et cetera, as Mr. Monowitz was suggesting, we may need to do something a little more focused to ensure we pick that up.
Yeah, good memory, though.
Thank you. Thanks.
Do you want to open the public hearing?
Yes, we're going to open the public hearing, but we have no speaker cards.
Okay.
So I would then suggest that we close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So would you like to make the motions? Would you like to make the motion?
Thank you. Like to make a motion that we adopt an ordinance to adopt the new NMU, Neighborhood Mixed Use, in North Fair Oaks zoning district, applicable in North Fair Oaks along Middlefield from First Avenue to Eighth Avenue, and waive the reading of the ordinance in its entirety. And next, by ordinance, the county zoning maps to redesignate the area currently designated as C1 NFOS-1 DR zoning on the Middlefield Road between First Avenue and Eighth Avenue with the NMU DR zoning designation and waive the reading of the ordinance in its entirety. And third, adopt the amended design review regulations for this area and waive the reading of the ordinance in its entirety. And finally, certify the related negative declaration for the project as complete and correct.
Second.
Any other further discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Slocum. We'll now go to the Public Works Department and Director Porter.
Good morning, President Groom, members of the board, Mr. Malpey and Mr. Byers. It's my pleasure today to present a recommendation to award a contract to construct a new fire station in Skyland. The fire station in question is Fire Station Number 58. It's located in what we call the Four Corners region. It's at the top of La Honda Road at Skyline Boulevard, pretty close to Alice's Restaurant. It's right there adjacent to it. Currently, the facilities up in Skyland are deteriorating and need to be replaced. This photograph shows a picture of the office and the barracks that our firefighters are using in that location. These structures were built in the late '30s in 1950 and are showing signs of wear. But more importantly, the site layout is not optimal for quick response. The barracks building is the furthest building from where the apparatus room on the current site layout plan. So when the firefighters do receive a call, they need to actually run up a hill to get to their equipment. That is problematic when it's rainy and especially icy in that location. We do receive some pretty cold weather up there. So part of our design was not only to replace the structures, but also to look at the site plan and try to provide a better layout. So in terms of where we've been, this project will be done through a design-build process. We developed bridging documents that were completed in March of this year. We sent out a request for qualification to qualify DBE teams, design-build entities. We received eight proposals. We narrowed that down to the three highest-ranking firms. Those were TB Pennick, a team from Clark Sullivan, and Gonzalez and Strunk. And staff is recommending that we execute an agreement with TB Pennick and Sons for $6.25 million. TB Pennick's proposal included not only replacement of the office and barracks, but also incorporation of an apparatus building and a vehicle storage building. The other two proposals we received were specific to the office and the barracks, so we felt that this was the best value for the county. We can complete the entire project through this contract and receive a very favorable product from this contractor. This photograph shows an artist's rendition of what this station could look like. As you can see, it's quite an upgrade from what we've seen in the past. Looking at the photograph, to the left-hand side of the photo is where the offices are and the sleeping quarters, as well as their ready room. On the right-hand side is the vehicle equipment area. That's where the active engines will be. And I'll show you a site plan here, which will show you where the vehicle storage is. So if you're going from, I guess, top to bottom, the top of the photograph is Skyline Boulevard, which is Route 35. To the right of this photograph is where Alice's Restaurant is. And right above this photograph, or the print that says "public entry and parking," that's where the existing barracks are. So we're essentially going to move the facilities to the north. We're also building a new exit onto Route 35. So if you can see where the station is, we're going to actually be pioneering a road up to Route 35 that is on quite a slope, so there's going to be some retaining walls. But it's going to allow the firefighters quicker exit from this facility. Also, the incorporation of the apparatus structure with the firehouse itself will allow the firefighters to get to their vehicles more quickly to cut down on response time. The vehicle storage for long-term storage is a bit behind the actual office and barrack structure, but that can be used for their seasonal firefighting equipment and storage of some of their personal protective equipment as well and whatever they'd like to store up there. So that concludes my presentation. We have our Assistant Chief from CAL FIRE here to answer any operational questions you might have. In going through this project, we worked very closely with CAL FIRE on the layout of the station itself, so we think we have a very good product here that we recommend your board approve. Thank you.
Supervisor Horsley?
Well, I mean, I'm just really excited to see this project come to fruition. We've been, we actually budgeted this shortly after Measure N. And this station, and as you can see, it's a joke the way it is today. And there's a lot of problems with the septic system. I won't go through it unless you want to know what it is, but one of the walls is actually not attached to the foundation on this existing building. So I'm really glad to see that we're able to actually change the ingress and exit for the, or ingress and egress for the station as well, because I know at one time, we weren't really looking at that whole process. This fire station is really important up in that area. It's really important to have them to be able to respond quickly. These are some of the worst accidents that you have in San Mateo County, especially motorcycle accidents. Getting them seen quickly is really incredibly important. And they are the, I'm really proud of CAL FIRE. You know, they, we have the potential, because of all of our open space, of having a wildland fire. So I'm really glad that we have actually, I think, the second-to-none fire department. So I'm really glad that we'll be able to really put the firefighters in a facility that is going to be modern, allow them to respond to emergencies more quickly. And I know the fire chief is here. I don't know if he wants to speak to this at all, but I think it's really exciting.
It's been very nice to be involved in the project. It's the first new fire station that I've been involved in in my 24 years, from beginning to end, helping with the design and then hopefully seeing it through to construction. One of the very nice things that needs to be brought forward also is that the seasonal CAL FIRE engine, the state fire engine that's assigned to that facility, was factored into this plan and will remain on-site. So it's as though the county receives a free fire engine. That engine will also remain on-site during the wintertime unless it's out for maintenance. And we're, on a side note, putting together as part of our flood plan, a plan to keep those four-wheel-drive engines and staff them up as necessary if the proposed El Nino comes through, especially if storms of the significance that they're talking about coming through with snow and stuff that we can find up there on the ridge top. So again, it's not just for the paramedic fire engine, but also for the state fire engine for this facility, and it's all been planned in.
Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to authorize the President of the Board of Supervisors to execute an agreement with TB Pennick and Sons for the design-build of the Skyland Fire Station 58 replacement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If we can just...
You want to do B now, Don?
And then a motion for the Director of Public Works to issue and execute the, on behalf of San Mateo County, reimbursements and change orders up to 10%.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
Just one quick comment. I was, I'm very excited about this as well, as I'm sure we all are, of course, but I'm glad that we were able to have the apparatus garages, or at least the primary ones, attached directly to the building, because at one point, there was some discussion of having that separate, and this is just going to make a very efficient system for everyone up there.
Thank you. Anything else on this item? Okay. We'll go to the County Manager, item number nine.
Madam President, members of the board, this item is really being brought forward by Supervisor Slocum, who is recommending from District Measure A funds the expenditure of $55,000 for the Service League in replacement of some equipment and fixtures in their facilities. As you know, the mission of the Service League is to assist those former inmates that are actually exiting our jail system to adjust back to the community. They do an excellent job, and I think this would be money well spent. Recommend its approval.
Want to make a motion?
Yeah, thank you. Just before I make the motion, I just wanted to compliment the Service League and its leadership and its team. When we took a tour over there, I was really impressed. They were actually having a group meeting, and some of the women shared with us how this program had basically saved their lives. And so, thank you for that. The other thing is, some of these heaters that we're talking about replacing, turns out they're right next to, I mean, right budding up against beds of kids and just not a safe situation, and they're old and they really do need to be replaced. So with that, I'd ask you to, or make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing, one time, $55,000 grant to the Service League of San Mateo County and authorizing the county manager or his designee to prepare and execute the grant agreement.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Excellent. Thank you, Supervisor Slocum. We have the County Manager report. Do you have questions or comments about that?
Just one thing I'd like to add to the report, sort of late-breaking news, if you will. As I think probably the board is aware, this weekend, the federal government and the state of California entered into a conceptual agreement with respect to the waiver that had been requested by the state for Medicaid slash Medi-Cal services. Supervisor Groom was very helpful in making calls to our legislative representatives and stressing the importance of this, not only to our county, but to, obviously, to the entire state. Also, Dr. Ehrlich went back to Washington to meet with officials from the CMA to also discuss how this will impact public hospitals. The details of the agreement, of course, are to be ironed out, and so the devil is in the details. We don't have a full report, and we won't have until those details are ironed out. Then we'll bring them back to the board. But all in all, we think it is very beneficial. We think this will certainly help our hospital and the other 17 public hospitals in the state of California continue their excellent work in providing services to the poor and indigent of our communities.
Good job, Carol.
Good job.
So now we'll go to the Board of Supervisors.
I would like to make a motion that we authorize the resolution directing the President of the Board of Supervisors to execute the amendment to the agreement with John Malpey for services as county manager, extending the term to the agreement until December 22, 2018.
Second.
I would just like to say that I think all of us agree that we have been exceptionally well-served by John, the work that he has done to kind of get the county back in the right direction, including a number of excellent new hires and new department managers, and reorganizing his team to more adeptly manage the county's business. And I'm just very delighted that you have agreed to stay for another two years.
Here, here. I did, I seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And now we have Board Member reports. Who would like to begin? Supervisor Horsley?
Just to comment, our Deputy County Manager, Peggy Jensen, I went to a library, I guess it was like essentially a fundraiser in Half Moon Bay, for the Half Moon Bay Library, and she was representing the JPA, I guess, in behalf of you, Supervisor, and she did a really fabulous job in describing the work of the JPA, and really appreciated her description and support for that Half Moon Bay Library. And I also really want to thank you. I know you've been really helpful with that as well. And it's actually, it's surprisingly controversial. In fact, the guys who are architects said it is more controversial than anything they've seen in Berkeley, if you can believe so, but I think we're going to get it done, and thanks for your help on this.
Well, I hope we're going to get it done. There are times when it seems like being helpful doesn't pay off.
Well, no good deed goes unpunished, I guess.
But, yes, I was, I'm very pleased that there was a super fundraiser the other night, and I think it will set us off in the right direction. It will help us very much if money, if private funds can be raised for that library, because it will be less money than for the city of Half Moon Bay to have to contribute, and that is certainly part of the controversy. That's it for you, Don? Okay. Supervisor TCA?
Yes, I have an adjourned memory of Claire Ann Hall. She was, lived her entire life in the city of San Francisco, growing up in Eureka Valley. She died just days before her 90th birthday. She attended Most Holy Redeemer Grammar School and St. Bridges High School, as well as the City College of San Francisco. She was married to Arthur Hall and had nine children. Her son Jeff is how I know her, and she was always, her home was constantly filled with family, friends, food, and pets of all kinds, so she was quite active in the city. She was active with St. Gabriel's and Rieden High School as well. And my sympathies go out to the Hall family. She was just a wonderful, wonderful woman. And I have one other, well, actually, two reports. One is the registration for seniors on the move is now closed since we've reached our capacity of 672 registrants. But people can still sign up for the waiting list by going to Congressman Spear's website at www.spear.house.gov. And this will take place this coming, this next Tuesday, November 10. The keynote speaker this year, which is really interesting, it should all encourage us to be out there and doing more in our parks and all, keynote speaker this year is Ann Lorimore. She's an 85-year-old great-grandmother who climbed Mount Kilimanjaro in July. So there's a little challenge for you. And if you, I could probably get you guys in if you want to hear that keynote speech, so we'll know what to look forward to.
So we're going to go mountain climbing next?
Exactly.
I see.
Exactly. Just the dunes on San Bruno Mountain. Also, our upcoming Age Well Drive Smart Seminar, the next one is in Daly City, Tuesday, December 1st, at the Westlake Community Center at 9:00 a.m. Thank you.
Supervisor Pye?
I just wanted to remark that Mike Calagie has been doing a lot of work on flood preparation for the potential El Nino storms coming, and he convened, or asked all the departments to put together plans for responding in event. We do have severe flood events, and actually had a presentation, made a presentation, each of the departments made a brief presentation at the end of the day last Friday. So a lot of work and thought has been put into that. You know, if our agenda has room, we might, I would suggest perhaps at the next meeting, having maybe an abbreviated presentation on the work that we've done to prepare for the storm season.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you. Just wanted to remind everybody, this Thursday at GSV Labs in Redwood City, Connect 15, I think we have around 160 people or so signed up, and we're very excited. It's going to be a great program, top-notch speakers, and of course, best of all, it's free.
All right. Good deal. I want to remind everybody, if you have not taken your ballot to your local city hall or to Tower Road or to county center, please do it. Today is Election Day, and we are doing this by all ballot mail. If it is postmarked by today, it will... If you're, if it is post, if it is postmarked by today, it will still be counted if it arrives within three days. So the safest thing to do is get in your, get, gun on your bicycle and ride down to your city hall and drop it in the box.
So politically correct there.
Then I'd like to do two things for Veterans Day. I'm going to take the thunder from my, my fellow veteran here and ask us to adjourn in memory of Major Taj Shereen, who was a pilot from San Mateo County, whose plane was shot down. He is a member of the Afghanistan United States Army in Afghanistan, and since next week is Veterans Day, I thought we should adjourn his memory. And then your Veterans Commissioner, Fred Baer, dropped by this morning and asked us to remind everybody that the real Super Bowl will be February 6th, and it is the Wounded Warriors playing an exhibition game against alumni from the NFL. So mark your calendar for February 6th, and maybe we can have our Veterans Commission as cheerleaders that day.
Very good. Thank you.
Now we are going to move to closed session. Okay. Mr. Byers, would you report at a closed session, please?
Yes, thank you, President Groom. The board met in closed session to consider and discuss the items A, B, and C on the, on the agenda. The board did take action, final reportable action under the Brown Act with regard to one item, and that's the workers' compensation case of Jenny Foster versus County of San Mateo. And the, the board, in unanimous vote, agreed to settle the matter for $90,493.91.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.